So I'll open the meeting at about 5:02. And Department has said need to start. So Sam, you want to lead us off? Some of the people report. It's coming around. They're looking pretty good. A couple people have faded, which is nice.
It's always nice.
It's always nice. I guess look at the top one of the folks that will be on for the meeting next year. We're looking at the Hammond's. I got a phone call the other day asking about payoff for the Hammond's. So that's maybe coming through for the entire amount. And the Stoneberg LLC is one up at Sherwood Forest that had a house on it that's been torn down. But he's doing something or renovation or something. So hopefully that's going to get funded up sooner we can move on.
So Handman called.
So we'll see how that goes. Um, we've got appointment slips for election folks coming down your way. That's coming along fine. Yeah. Nothing, nothing to report there. Uh, I went to the Tax Ploppers Conference in September and I went to the first conference in October. So that's all behind me. Election and then tax bills.
Thank you, Sam. Anything to do with your conferences or anything?
Reinforcement.
Thank you.
Questions for me?
None for me.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you, I am.
Get out of the sun here.
Put it down at the shop.
Just by the door? Just leave it by the door?
Yeah.
Okay.
Chief Samash, why don't you run? Thank you, sir.
We got two pages today.
I get you. Yeah, yeah, gotcha. All right. Good afternoon. Town meeting at the top. 335 business to date. We're seven behind all of 2023. We'll surpass that by the end of this month. Fire prevention. We did seven different demonstrations for seven different groups of elementary and preschool age children over the last two weeks. Uh, last week Canterbury Elementary School, all 100 and some children came over. Uh, that was led by Captain Craig Simpson. Uh, he was on Baptist Road. He did a great job bringing teams coordinating and running the whole thing for that. Um, had six different department members come in their own time to assist us with that. It was a really good presentation with the school could interact with the children as is every year. And we ended up getting the fire marshal's office at the speed as well with their accelerant detecting K-9. So he's a-
Oh, that was the, uh, the fire dog that came?
Yeah, anthem. Uh, she was interacting with the children pretty well. They all you would have had her and then after the demonstration they could take her with us. So we're pretty happy with that.
Did any pictures from that event happen to get over to Mark Travis? Do you know for the newsletter?
Uh, no, not yet. I have not. That's a better idea than my, but I can. I'll make a point to someone.
Thank you. They would like to put that content on the new, um, town newsletter website.
Okay.
And, um, it did. A lot of people look at that. That'd be great. Thank you.
Uh, so keeping touch with the residents in County Lane. Uh, waiting for their final install to go for their, their cobbler. Which had closed their room for another week. Uh, so just waiting on that. They expect that before winter. So I'm in communication with them. They have my contact information. Recently in the southern part of the state, there was a double fatal carbon monoxide incident a couple of weeks ago. I met with the fire marshal's office and talked about lessons learned and all that stuff with that. Uh, long story short, they haven't really public the actual cause, but it appears to be accidental. And, um, they did have carbon monoxide detectors in their house, but they didn't have that at the reason. So and the carbon monoxide detectors were only three years old. So it's, um, you know, around the world with that. For major effort, we put it out on social media. Uh, it's a good idea. We changed clocks in the fall and in the spring to attach the health detectors. And basically that we all smoke detectors, we replace after 10 years anyways. There's a, there's a one on date, uh, stamp to every device. So it's a good idea to replace those up to 10 years. Those essentials go back. So I also have a note for any residents in County. The citizens would be happy to help. They scheduled to come up to their house, take a look and assist them with that. Along those same lines, last week we went to a medical call in town and we happened to notice, talking to the residents, there was no smoke or CO detectors in the house. Well, they currently have. So we made that with big connections and make sure that they were putting, and help them put them in itself.
Thank you kindly.
In addition to that, I reached out to American Red Cross. Uh, it's the second page in the pamphlet. Um, they have a free program where you can go on and log on and sign up and make an appointment. And somebody could come to your house and install smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, no charge. Those are generally geared to the people that can't afford or come up themselves. Uh, so we did put that out on our website. Um, there's a, there's a link right there. There's a web link right there. You just fill out the form and they, they'll be in contact.
Is it, uh, smoke? There's just a smoke alarm, doesn't you?
Yeah, smoke and CO too.
It is CO too as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Great.
And we just finished updating the Canterbury Elementary School Emergency Response Plan for 2024-25 school year. So that's done. Uh, membership, half the house left last year. We haven't had a safety officer. Uh, disappointed last week in a new safety officer. His name's Rick Bilodeau. He lives in Lawton. He's, uh, he's, um, many years in the business and he's, um, uh, he's at the Southern Education in our town. He's a member of our pride.
Could you spell this last name, please?
Bilodeau, B-I-L-O-D-E-A-U. You met him last week.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just didn't know how to spell his name. B-I-L?
B-I-L-O. Yep.
D-E-A-U.
Yeah.
Okay.
Rick, yeah.
Yes, I did meet him last night. Last week. Perfect.
Also under membership, I removed three active members. It was three inactive members last week. Uh, even though they do get paid a stipend, there is a cost to the town to maintain members on, on the, um, on the roster as far as gear and training and stuff like that goes. So, you know, if the town is not getting 25 to 50%, 25% of the calls, 50% of trainings, uh, over a period of time, um, you know, they are warned a few times. And then for the most part, we part ways because it's not, it's not good for the town to keep those people on the roster.
And that's usually okay, parting? They don't?
Well.
Sometimes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Some are better than others.
Got it.
Better than others, you're right.
Got it.
Uh, September was a busy month as far as fleet inspections and repairs. Uh, nothing major. So everything's also done. It kept us going. Just finished, uh, just signed last week the hospital agreement for 2025 with Concord Hospital. Uh, that is complete. Uh, for service for our town, able service for our town, uh, transport service. And then the radio project, if you happen to see a crane or a skylight in the back of the station tomorrow, uh, they're coming to replace the antenna. They've sent the antenna and probably at the end of the day tomorrow, the radio project that I didn't kind of earmark my first, second month in town is going to be completed. So.
Yay.
Is that the one right in the corner? Yeah, the one basically right right over the center of the building. Yeah, they're adding 10, maybe 20 feet to it. And, and then, you know, extending our capabilities in town, not just the fire, but police and highway, uh, if we need to use radios.
Great, thanks.
Do you all run up the same antenna there or is it? Well, for, for local, for, for, for direct coverage, um, for most part, we run up with that antenna. For the fire, we will pull, hail, kill, and then sort of go to dispatch from there. So, yeah. That's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Uh, did the information about, um, replacing smoke detectors and, you know, the, did that go into the town newsletter?
It did not, but it was probably a pretty good idea to put it down.
I would say town newsletter and, um, if you want, you can just tell me what it is and I can get it over to Mark and make it go through the, the channels I can.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, when I have time, I send up, uh, probably about, probably about every third month, I send something in the newsletter for him. But I haven't responded, but it's probably a pretty good idea to put it back.
For this one in particular, since it's so important, it would be great. And he'll put it in the newsletter and that. And then Cal, that would be something that could go in the town email as well, I believe. Yeah, I'll get all three bases because that's an, that's an important one.
So I tried to scan that scan code. That didn't work. Uh, but the website worked. The website worked. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a pretty complicated code there.
Yeah, yeah. So I couldn't get that to work, but the website worked. So I had to figure out what we had a few last week. Figured I'd roll it out. So I'll get that in the newsletter as well.
That's great. Thank you. All right.
Didn't get much of a town.
Spent most of the days hiking in the canyon. So it was in the tunnel somewhere there, but it was hot. Thank you.
Mrs. Baker.
Thank you. Hey. I know that. Hello.
Hello.
How do you?
Start right on the bat. Want to praise, uh, fire and police, um, for the collaboration and community helpers today, October 9th. Um, I was raised as a firefighter's daughter, but thought that we should probably include the police department. And, um, she was wonderful to come. He was very tired staff that day. He was actually by himself that day. Um, and so, um, I wanted to say thank you very much for that collaboration. That went very well. Um, don't know if you've had a chance to watch on my YouTube video, um, crash course on library governance. Um, if you have had a chance, I would love to answer any questions that you would have on that.
You are pinned to the top of my list for coffee tomorrow because I knew you would ask us tonight if we had watched.
That's okay. The video is there. Um, it explains, just like I say, it's a crash course in, um, library governance. Um, it's basically a lot of answers to the questions that I am asked, especially during budget season. Um, and it's a lot of things because the state of the country is so different in the way that we operate our services. Um, it has a lot of information in there. After you watch it, it is on my YouTube channel, which is a public YouTube channel. But I sent a private link, um, just because for the purpose of it was to, you know, just for people in the community who have those questions. Um, but it does cover the relationship between friends and the library and select board and the library and most importantly, tax appropriate funds.
So where is this located?
So I emailed the link to your, um, your, uh, self-board email and I can send it again if you'd like.
Okay.
Yep. So I'll send that again. I sent it two different times, but I'll send it again and, um, feel free to watch it. You know, keep in mind, it's never easy making videos. Um, but if you have any questions, please feel free.
Is June Miller in here and a rabbit?
No, not this one.
Okay, I'll watch it anyway. Thank you.
But click the bell so subscribe and like. So I do have plenty of yours. Um, fun fact about Mrs. Baker. Um, so my board of trustees was not able to meet tonight. Uh, they did not have a forum. So, um, they will be meeting next Monday. Um, and that is when, um, they are finalizing the budget. And they'll be able to present that shortly thereafter. Um, but I think it'd be pleased with the budget this year. Um, paving didn't happen, but John says they will happen. John was good to let me know that they were going to come on Friday and then reschedule to a Wednesday. And then John was also good to let me know.
November 1st.
Yay. What kind of day is that?
It is a Friday.
Yay. Thank you. That's going to be great. And I have ordered a new book repository. So maybe this extra time will be good. Um, and the only other thing was the energy committee. Uh, Tom Franco had come to me to talk about a geothermal grant. And I emailed him back to know how I could help him a little bit more with that. Um, but I'm a hundred percent eager to see that grant be submitted. Um, just because, as you know, I'm working on solutions for my heating. Um, she's working well right now, but she's a 21-year-old oil burner. Um, so I told him if there's anything I could do to help facilitate that, uh, I'd be more than happy to. So I don't know if they brought that to your attention.
The committee got a heads up FYI that they were looking into it, but no specifics.
No specifics.
And I, I got a, um, you know, as part of the energy, the board of, for the, uh, board of, for the energy committee, I got a copy of that. It was just a heads up FYI, we're looking into this, but no specifics about what that actually means. Like what?
Do you have more information?
What geothermal is, how it might work here, blah, 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 just for looking into it. But I'm assuming we'll get a lot more.
Hey, I think the way we're going to hopefully proceed is to make sure that we have up to date, uh, energy uses on the buildings that we're considering.
Oh, the energy on it. Sorry.
An energy on it, yeah.
Yeah, because we wouldn't need that for any grant because I have a level two energy on it. Um, but it's quite a few years old. Not much has changed, but, um.
It said library and parish house. Community center. Tom Franco said.
Yeah, I think the parish house thing is going to get on the train.
I think there's a number of people who are calling the parish house a community center and I don't know.
Yes, we're in.
It gets a little, yeah. So anyway.
Shred mark.
Tom, Tom's email said library and perhaps, perhaps community center, parish house. But that wasn't either, that wasn't detailed either. So.
Okay, so I'll.
Much more information to come.
I feel like that too.
Yeah.
I'm all for it.
And I don't know what other buildings at, you know, at this point does it, should we add the, um, town hall to that list?
It already is, I'm watching.
It did. His email doesn't specify that. So I just want to make sure that that's included if they're doing it. Seems like it should be anyway.
Okay.
But.
Why? I am eager.
Okay. Yeah.
You don't have any oil in there, do you?
No, not your gas.
Not even that?
Propane. Correct. Propane. So I'm eager to get in geothermal would be great. Um, I, I just need a heating system. Because as you know, it's my problem if it's proactive. It would be a bigger problem and more funds than I have in my budget if it breaks. So it's in all of our best interests to work together to get a resolution on it before it comes. So.
I would think yes. Much information to follow. Yes, please.
Yes, please. Okay.
Um, what about the, um, over the back door? Any movement on the?
I have an estimate. I just got an estimate today.
Oh.
From one contractor and the other one supposedly is going to give it to me this week sometime.
Okay. Excellent. And?
With the possibility of it to be done before snow?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's, thank you. And I also talked to Tia Glass about maybe changing some tiles inside because that roof repair has worked.
Yeah.
It's the first in probably two, three years in that building.
And I'm meeting with the Health Trust on Monday about healthcare. And I have information coming from the internal trust also.
Okay.
So that should be, in another couple of weeks, I should have some options.
That would be great. That would be great. So what I did on my budget is I left my insurance line, just like my retirement line.
We're meeting with the budget committee the first meeting in November. So I'll have all that before that meeting.
Oh, that's fabulous. Thank you.
So the budget committee can get that from us.
We're fairly decent for lower cost options. Because we will have another person who is eligible. So we'll have three people, you know, utilizing the health insurance. And so I appreciate that option, Ken.
Ken, when's the budget meeting?
What? Sounds right. The first morning.
The same as the, as our select board meeting? And they'll be here? Okay. Pleasure. Got it?
Yeah.
This November's nice and clean as opposed to. All right.
It'll get worse.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you. I'll see you later.
John. It's pretty quiet in the garage. Pipe worked on the Azro. That pipe was crushed. They had to, uh, instead of just resetting it, but got a new set, put that in. They finished that up the other day. So at some point I'll get up there and just put a greater pave over for the winner. Beavers are playing on Pickard and Misery, our usual spots. Yeah. Um, the greatest swap went good. I pulled the wing off. Somehow New Road and Parks Bowl came out drivable.
That's a good sign.
So I was doing too bad with it.
How's it with the Joyce next year?
They're pretty, yeah. They're interesting, pretty into it.
Is it?
Yeah. Where the old green grader was, boom, steer. That's pretty much the same. It's just what's at the end.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, looking forward to patching up. Paving is 10:30, 31, and November 1st for the library. Now scheduled. Dump should be shipping out bales so that we can claim the salt shed again. See, you have November's around the corner. And I still have two trucks out for repair. Hopefully they'll be working on those. Any questions for me?
No.
Yes. What do you mean when you say the beavers are playing on Pickard and Misery?
Well, right now, um, below Huey's old place?
Yeah, yeah.
There's a double pipe there?
Yeah.
There is no water flow going through. They plug up inside the pipe.
So is there any need for the conservation commission to get in flagging the beaver dis-ever?
I'll call the trapper and have them trying to wait for them to fatten up a little bit.
For some of us who perhaps think tracking is not the first option, might the conservation commission with a beaver dis-ever help with a problem like it does in Gimble Pond? No?
I don't think so.
Okay. They've been a problem there before with the same results?
They come and go. Yeah.
Is it okay as a representative of the conservation commission that I just asked them perhaps? Quickly, you do your calling. I'll do my asking. How about that?
Okay.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
There's plenty of them around.
Who do you use when you call? Is Paradise still?
He's down on 132, Mr. Check. There's a guy, he's loud and, uh, same bone, I believe, who wants to come over, but he doesn't want to step on those.
When, when are you looking to have this done?
Uh, I should call soon.
Okay, you, you do your calling.
Running up to log up the call. It's not doing much good.
Okay. Thank you.
What do you have to do? Take them out and empty them or?
No, I just run a tree down the culvert. Um, fresh water pressure usually will flush it.
And there's, where are the two places, please? You said Misery?
Misery and Pickard, below Huey.
Are we putting a fire hydrant in there or?
Uh, probably not this year, but, but you're right in that area.
Is it going on the west side or the east?
Huey side.
East side, yeah.
Huey side, New Road side of the whack.
Yeah.
It's the way I understood it.
So I think that's the west side.
Yeah. Charlie's Mudhole.
Yeah.
Um, I see a little firestorm on Facebook about taking oil at the dump. Is that, do we fall up there or are we at a problem?
We have been full. It's very expensive to get rid of. Um, I brought an IBC, uh, container up Saturday so that they can move some again, but it needs to go somewhere. It's just a waste of oil.
It's contaminated again, though, is it? Or didn't we have a problem with that not too long ago?
We had low flash.
It was contaminated. We had to have, uh, um, clean harvests come up and dispose of it. It's very expensive. Um, the company, the local garage that was using it, uh, has let us know that they're not going to take it anymore. Um, we have, there are a couple of other places that will take it. But we have to have a certified hauler move it and we're trying to find one. At a reasonable rate. Um, problem is if we just put it in the tank and put it in the back of one of our trucks and we have spill, there's a lot of liability there. So. Um, and, um, I, I talked to John about this today. I think from our perspective, the town's perspective of liability, it's best that we not take any for a while. Because we don't, we have a double wall container up there that we typically fill and that protects against spills and, and everything. Um, the problem is we have a bomb cab running around up there and people driving in and out. And if that container gets hit in something and we got a leak, there's going to be a, a very expensive cleanup. So my thought was that we should, at least to protect the town, the liability for the short term, to stop taking it. There are alternatives. A lot of the park stores in Concord will take it. So you bring a gallon or a couple gallons in, they'll take it. Um, a lot of towns don't even take it. So I think we're providing a service that a lot of towns don't. Um, but I think it's in the best interest of the town that we stop taking it for a while until we figure out how we can get rid of what we have.
There seem to be enough people who were concerned about it and were talking about how they wanted to, you know, just put it in their garbage anyway. Can we get ahead of that a little bit and just put a thing in the, in the town email this week? And just say for the, for the moment, while we investigate our options, so the town, whatever you just said. Just, you know, bear with us while we figure out our options. Not that we don't want to take it, but we can't take it now.
Sure.
And I think most people would understand that. As opposed, and have it come from the, you know, the town as opposed to being part of the Facebook chatter. Which, which can get dubious.
I have contacted Northeast Resource Recovery and asked them if they have a list of certified haulers and I'm waiting to hear back. Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, another transfer station item, uh, manager David Bowles going on vacation next week. Um, he's going to be gone Tuesday, Wednesday and Saturday. Um, we have Tuesday and Wednesday covered. Uh, Herb Bashel is going to help on up there. Um, Saturday, uh, I've had.
Saturday the second?
Yes. Saturday I've had, uh, had a couple of people, a couple of staff at the town office volunteer their services up there. So I think we'll be covered. So.
Do we have a way of selling garbage bags?
Yep.
Okay.
So we'll take care of that and, and, um, so I think we're covered, but just so you know, he's not going to be there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you mentioned that to me Saturday. Had a conversation. And then one other item for highway, um, the contractor we have been working with for the dirt roads, uh, that didn't pan out. So John has talked to another contractor and we're working on, on getting something contracted placed by the engineer. Any questions for John?
No. I'm down for you. So thank you.
Thanks. Any report from the police department? Yep, we have, uh, the chief can't make a night. Okay. Um, so he has the statistics.
Got it.
The tenure.
Yeah.
No big, uh, news there as far as statistics. The drunk takeback is, uh, the 26th from 10 to 2 at the police station. Um, and then the town Halloween at the center is the 26th.
There's also a town, oh, he doesn't need to know. Well, I don't know if they go for that. There's a, there's another trunk or treat thing at Shaker Village. And not at Shaker Village. I always say that. At Sherwood Forest.
At Sherwood Forest?
They're having a Halloween event too. Do they contact or at least do they need to? Is it?
I don't think so.
All right.
Unless they request an officer.
Okay.
All right. Shaker Village?
Yep.
Yep.
You, you guys are upset, I assume nobody else is coming?
Just us, and.
Um, agenda, and we keep the copies of the pilot. What did you say? And. Okay. Use this, I can give this to you. Uh, no, I made, I made one for each of them. Yeah, and then this is one more copy of that I. No, I don't know, I don't know if that many people know that, so.
Yeah.
Advertise that. Yes. So people aren't hanging on.
Just this count?
If there wasn't one in your group folder, then that's.
There was none, yeah, okay. All right, I can share this.
Okay, this group here, please, that thousand. Oh, the same way, I do have a card, so this is helpful, I have that. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, that, that was in the group folder.
Okay, we got this here. Uh, these. This one we saw.
Okay. Discussion.
Okay.
Guess we have them.
All right, has everybody got a copy of the Nature Conservancy goes to the office?
Yes.
Yep. All right. Ken, this is the first time seeing this document, so.
I'm not exactly sure how to, uh, have it know. Actually, even when I read through and got to the end, what it meant. How, how it was decided.
So that, this was the document that our attorneys sent to us in reference to the current use, um, the, the pop, in, in this spreadsheet type thing.
Yeah.
They made it put together.
Yeah.
This was the, what they sent back. Um, this was the case, case law they sent back.
Okay.
And that said they, that should support their, um, responses to how the open fields are not exempt under the Nature Conservancy case. So I sent this to you guys.
Which we have.
And, um, just a little background. We went through our records and found that, um, Shaker Village was paying, uh, taxes on current use taxes up until the late nineties. Uh, it was ninety-six was the last one we have. Um, the last tax warrant that we have that Shaker Village paid for that, on these, uh, fields that we listed on the current use. Um, and it looks like in the ninety-seven, ninety-eight was when Shaker Village started sending, um, what, what we would call a payment of the taxes. Started out as a thousand, and then in two thousand and fourteen, uh, we had a, a formal agreement, um, um, for a, for a pilot, um, that was listed here. So that, just a little background on that current use property. Um, I, this is, I mean, this is the part where I think the discussion probably, I think everything else was more or less agreed upon at the end of.
Correct.
In the last meeting, there was the A nine, more detailed A nines, done in April and things like that. But I think the last part of this was the, was the acreage, the current use acreage.
Yeah.
Um, I guess, that's all I have.
Let me, let me see if I can shed some light on that nature conservancy thing. Um, subsequent to receiving the document from the attorney on the, the case law, um, Mandy apparently sent Aaron a further explanation, and I'll, and I'll just make it real simple. There were two issues that came up in nature conservancy. First was the use of the land, and the second was how you measure the use of the land. And they came up with, with a phrase, as they called it, uh, slight negligible or insignificant, okay? You know, the language that the attorney had sent us was, um, the nature conservancy, they couldn't show that their use rose above being a slight insignificant or negligible use, okay? So there are two things I think we really need to just try and, and discuss here. The first is the use, and I think we're all going to agree to, in that that use is actually that of a museum. All right, and the second one is gonna be a little bit softer to try and figure out is, does the way we use that land rise above the slight negligible or insignificant, or insignificant? Okay? When we took over the property, it was very clear in the articles of agreement and all the arrangements that the Shaker Village Inc., their charter was to preserve and interpret the legacy of the Shakers. Okay? I wanna get, make it real simple here by saying, if you stop and look at this land as, as a repository for Shaker artifacts, just like you look at the buildings, like the dwelling house, like you look at the brethren shop, you look at all the buildings where we're storing artifacts, there's a very direct correlation between the two, you know? And I think it was from nineteen eighty-four, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, when, uh, David Starbuck, he did a very detailed, uh, mapping and exploration. Were you able to find that book by chance?
No, I was looking, I thought you said Scott Swank, I did find this land use master plan, but I didn't find that.
Anyway, Dr. Starbuck, who was up at Plymouth State, he, he did a hundred and sixty-three page document where he mapped out every ditch, every stone wall, every cellar, every foundation, anything that could be assigned to the Shaker legacy, and he published that. Um, Jim Garvin, who some of you may know, has already done academic studies on a number of areas like Turning Mill Pond. Um, Scott Swank, I think it was, did the Shaker Mill Pond study. And when you take a look at the acreage that we have there, we have all the Mill Ponds. You know, we have all that. So, you know, in our view, the use as a museum, all right, is directly influenced by the fact that we can't take those artifacts that are out there and move them into a building, they're built in. Now, in terms of the interpretation, um, Aaron just gave me the numbers. Um, one of the comments in nature conservancy was, is that uh, the nature conservancy had only spent several hundred dollars in signs or things like that. Well, after going back and looking at our records, we spent over forty-four thousand dollars in interpretive materials. We put up interpretive trail signs. We printed out interpretive, uh, trail maps, which point out all the different articles. And even though we don't have directed tours that are on the land, this is like a self-contained walking tour of a museum room. So I, I think whereas the nature conservancy took a piece of raw land, and they wanted to develop some trails and some other things on it, consequently the term open fields came up. I think our use and the way we put it to use is quite a bit different from the way the nature, nature conservancy case was decided on that. So, you know, from, from our view, I think it's, it, it's clearly an exempt piece of property because it ties directly back to our mission and our purpose. Uh, we've done work to preserve that area. We've done work to interpret the area, which is directly associated with our, our mission.
If, if I can add to that, I agree with that, and I think, you know, I just have been going back trying to sort of pull together some of this work again, claiming that, like, the new girl thing, like, I don't actually know. But we do have, going all the way back to nineteen eighty-five, you know, we have our first landscape master plan. Um, you know, different phases of this, we hired a full-time land manager in nineteen ninety-nine. Two thousand, we did a fifteen-year forest management plan. Two thousand, we also did our historic land use and master plan. And we, it's, it is planful, mindful use of the property conservation. Um, isn't always the most, uh, visible land use. Um, but we do, like Dave mentioned, the preservation, so, you know, the land is in use as part of our museum for sort of preservation of these sort of Shaker, um, ruins, Shaker artifacts out in the field. There's the conservation piece, um, of course, you know, which, that also regulates the archeology. We do have a forest management plan. I just, our, our plan, we're getting a revision done right now. And so I just had a meeting with our, um, the consultant who's doing that on Friday. And he said that, um, you know, we do have a forest management plan. Sometimes he said in his words, sort of, tree time is slow time, and so sometimes a ten-year plan will recommend no action, um, but that doesn't mean we're not following a plan. Um, I don't know, this time he said there will be recommended action, specifically in term of removing invasive and things like that, but I don't, we don't know yet. We'll get the new plan soon, know if we're due for a timber harvest in any of the areas or anything. But he also did say, and I didn't know this, we are also a certified tree farm. Um, and again, in terms of current use, um, and, and again, I don't, he doesn't have experience with nonprofits, he, but he does have, um, experience with current use, and being a certified tree farm, I forget the, the, the level of current use, but it's sort of the, the least, the, the most, um, forgiveness, tax forgiveness in, in current use. So I can pull together, I can make this into a more coherent case if we need to. Um, but I think we, we really do feel like, and then there's the recreation piece. Of course, people come, walk the trails, walk on the land. Because it's open and free, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, we don't have, we can't tell you how many people use it. Um, but that is another way that, that the land is actively used by the community, really. At least some people.
I, I think what's really more important is, is that we segregate or parse out our easement. The easement, in my mind, has absolutely nothing to do with the exemption that we're looking for here. Okay? The easement says it's gotta be open to the public, the easement says you have to do. What it is, is that the agreement that we entered into on day one in the seventies said you're gonna preserve, okay, you're going to take care of the legacy. All right, the easement just basically gives us the rules of the road to do that. All right, so when we talk about whether this is an exempt property or not, I'd like to set the easement aside and just look at how we're using it, and ask ourselves, does the way the Shaker Village used the land rise above slight negligible or insignificant? And I contend that it, it, it does rise above that.
And I think you, you might know this from just going by, but the open, if, if the open fields part is the part two, and maybe not so much the trails and woods. Um, you know, we do have an agreement, someone hays our fields, someone cow, I don't know what you call it. Runs cows in the field.
Pastures.
Pastures, cows in the field. Um, you know, we, we are really trying to keep it, we have stewards, our land stewards come at least once a week to help manage the orchards and the trails. Our master gardeners come at least once a week to help, you know, maintain the, the landscape, so. Um, again, not knowing what the measure is of what makes it more than insignificant. We believe that it is, it's actually quite actively used and, and managed. I guess that's our, our case. We're over the question.
That's just very, very simply stated, you know, I think we passed the two tests that nature conservancy did not, when the court ruled on that.
In this case?
Yeah, in that particular case.
Yeah.
But like I said, the subsequent material that we got from the attorney, from the town attorney, made it very clear that those were the two tests that were involved. The use of the land and does it rise above slight negligible or insignificant? So, you know, I just take a very plain reading of definitions and, you know, dump, as an engineer, I gotta use the dictionary all the time. But just the word definition, the definition of the word slight means small in degree or inconsiderable. Definition negligible is so small or unimportant as to not, as to be not worth considering. And insignificant is too small or unimportant to be worth consideration. And when you take a look at the way that we're using those acres, I think we're very clearly making very significant contributions.
And, and where actually are you finding this phrase, a slight insignificant? In significant?
It's in the, in the case.
Is it in the case? All right.
The email is there, but I think it also, there is also, I'm gonna find it. Oh, I found it, it's three in the bottom, bottom right. Oh yeah, here you go.
Yeah.
This occupation and use cannot be slight negligible or in, or insignificant.
Okay, then that was really the key test that, that the court had, had put on the nature conservancy case. And like I said, from my perspective, the easement, whether we, whether people like to snowboard, whether they like to walk their dogs, whether they like to do, to me, is, is a non-issue right here. That, that's a collateral benefit of, that's been laid out by the easement that we have. Now I think if we could just focus on the use, and how we're putting, the use being a museum, and how we're putting it to use as a museum, just like any other museum would. I think that's the key right there. So, I'm probably gonna be way off base on this, but you have indicated that you had paid the town two thousand dollars in the taxes. Is that correct?
Yes, this year.
But we paid, the, the agreement in twenty fourteen, which is the last one, was based solely on the Dewey School. Had nothing else to do. It was very clear that the twenty fourteen agreement between the village and the town was based on the Dewey School, where the town assessed the Dewey School because it was a restaurant, and then through whatever negotiations occurred back then, which I had no knowledge of. You know, the Shaker Village said, well, it's going to be a culinary school. And becoming the culinary school, very simply converted it over to an exempt property at that point. And I think the agreement was, the agreement was, is because of the gray area that they were talking about, the people who ran the village at that time basically said, we'll pay two thousand dollars. Uh, voluntary, and I underline the word voluntary, uh, pilot payment with the taxes.
What's the, what's the, um, agreement that you have, Ken? Does it, is it more specific? Seems odd that when we.
It's the same agreement that we have.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but the Dewey School didn't.
Thank you, I mean, I just, I.
Well, yeah, it predates the Dewey School, so it, it was the restaurant.
Is this what we got?
I saw the Dewey School building.
Oh, yeah, I suspect it was when the restaurant was operating that the tax came in, and then when that went back out, is when this agreement was negotiated, it seems like.
Ah. I. But Dewey School isn't mentioned?
It's not, no, it wasn't the Dewey.
No, that's the call for Dewey School building.
Oh, all right.
I would probably misspoke.
Some people call it Shaker Table, you know.
Yeah.
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 But it's the newer building, not in the village, it's across the street in the.
Where the.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Okay.
So, only looking at what's printed on the four corners of that page, the negotiation at that time dealt with the Shaker Table Restaurant School. Okay. Had nothing to do with the, uh, the acreage.
What's the date on August?
Right, August thirteenth, twenty fourteen.
And I don't know, I don't know if your records, I now know the room that our records are in, um, but I haven't gone looking yet to see it. It's good to hear your date of, that we paid taxes on the current use parcels through ninety-six.
Hmm.
But then not, and began the pilot payments in ninety-eight, ninety-seven, ninety-eight. Because that was about the same time we were pulling together all of these land use management plans and hired staff for that, so I suspect there was a similar negotiation where they were saying, while it was in current use, now it's part of our museum property.
Could be, I.
I don't, I haven't got those records.
I wasn't here, I wasn't in my position then, so.
Yeah.
That's what I mean, most of us.
And what year is that, Aaron, that you're talking about?
Well, you said that we paid, um, through, of current use through ninety-six. And then in ninety-seven, ninety-eight is when we began an, a pilot payment, for which we don't have the agreement, at least at this point.
Though, we couldn't find a formal agreement, and in August of two thousand and fourteen. And in August of 2014, I started in July of fourteen.
Okay.
And, uh, our assessor said that we had been receiving a pilot, um, starting in ninety-eight, but we hadn't received one for a while, so I contacted the director at the time and said, are you guys still doing a pilot or? And, um, so there was negotiations with the board of selectmen at that time. And that was when this pilot was, was signed in August of, of fourteen. So.
And if.
Since the, the pilot has come into the discussion here, what I'd like to propose is is that we restate, renegotiate the pilot.
That, that, I think that's, that was like talked to our assessor, that's what she said. Maybe you guys could just talk about.
It seems, because this doesn't, this doesn't seem effective if the, if we need to talk about the property and this doesn't include the property.
Exactly.
Which it doesn't, according to looking at this.
The intention, I think, of a pilot is to, you know, if we're an exempt organization and our activities are exempt, it's to acknowledge that you, we still, the town still bears real costs to serve us, you know?
As I say, it's still town services.
And so, and so we recognize that those costs exist and are going up. And so it's probably time to look at that agreement again.
Right, and I, I, I don't have a problem in opening up the discussion over the pilot. All right? But I want to make sure it's very clear that the pilot is offered in a voluntary basis. Okay? And we're, we're willing to play in the sandbox. And then we'll sit down and consider it, Ken or whomever, and figure out what the right number's going to be.
If, if you could educate me though, please, why is it important that it's a voluntary basis? Because if we have an agreement of whatever nature and then it's not followed by either party and it's just voluntary, how's it?
Pilots, there, there's nothing in the legislation that mandates non-exempt to pay pilot. And anything, any of the literature you read about payments and lieu of taxes, they make it very clear they're all voluntary.
Good, good faith efforts by the, by both parties is what it is.
That's by both parties.
Yeah. Ken, with respect to, weren't there, um, some taxes and penalties and?
There were, the tax rules went out in 2024. Um, as I've said before, you guys have the ability to abate any taxes. What, probably the best, the cleanest process would be the Shaker Village would write a letter requesting a bait of all taxes, which is the penalties.
And June.
Yep, but, and that's, you know, that would be the process, the cleanest, cleanest way. And then you guys get to vote on when you're gonna abate that.
Okay, right. And you have our, you have my letter from June.
Yes.
Is that sufficient or do we need another letter that says on further discussion?
All we do is, I'll, I'll look at it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll talk to, with our assessor and see, and, and our tax factor, make sure that, that's, there's enough clarity in there that.
Debate always seems.
If not, let's not, we can certainly restate based on the full conversation too.
And you made a pilot and discount.
April.
Yeah, that's what, I didn't remember. Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Right.
And then we've paid the balance of, you know, of what was paid. So in theory, we're hoping that that, or some portion of that comes back.
Erin, do you know how much?
That was.
The, the tax bill was, the, the full tax bill was for $7,009. Uh, we sent in a payment of $5,009 and our position was is that we should apply the pilot to the remaining $2,000.
I understand.
We got a second bill for the $2,000 with interest and whatever on it.
We haven't.
So if, if, I'm gonna use my municipal experience here. I would ask for a motion and a vote to abate the tax, the interest and the penalties for the first tax bill of the year.
Yeah.
And also to negate the need for a second tax, tax bill. I don't know, where do we stand with the acreage?
I, this is, I mean, that, this whole current use thing, that's where we're.
Yeah.
That's what was.
Right, so the point, point, point I'm making is, is I think our acreage is exempt for the reasons that I stated. It's used as a museum and the way we use it rises above the slight negligible or insignificant test. And I guess those are assessors, that's up to you guys to decide.
Now, my, my next question would be is, do we need, do we need to have everything that we've discussed this evening clear, clarified, put down? This is what you would like, you would like the abatement, you would like us to make a motion and blah, blah, blah. We had a presentation on this. Can we look at that all in one place at one time and then say, yes, we're going to abate or no, forget it? You know, whatever we're going to say, but can we, can we do that with all the moving pieces here tonight? Or can we have, you know, your letter, um, you know, our discussion tonight, these findings, all in one place before?
So.
Is that reasonable to say?
You, so.
And, and.
If you're, if you're comfortable making a decision on the acreage.
Yeah.
Tonight, you could make a decision on that based on the testimony here. As far as the abatements, um, given there the letter, and, and I can, I apologize, I didn't bring that with me. But.
You might want, no, no, I mean, yeah, I might have time to review it.
I mean, you guys could look at it and make a decision tonight, or you could decide, you know, wait until the next meeting. It's up to you guys.
Yeah, I, personally, I'd be comfortable in, in doing the acreage. This, to me, seems clear. The only thing is, is can we, do we, do we wait to, uh, make a motion and a decision formally on the, um, abating the taxes until after we have redone our, the document about the pilot program? And get all our, you know, we're going to do this, we're not gonna do this, or whatever we need, all in one place and say, okay, this is our.
That's up to you guys.
That would make me more comfortable, but that's just me. I'm comfortable on the acreage tonight, but the rest of the program, the rest of the process.
If, if I could, we're talking about right now a single tax bill.
Yeah.
Where the town attorney pretty much supported the exemptions for all the buildings that were located on that, I'm, I'm trying to very, be very specific here. The town attorney has supported the exemptions for all the buildings that are listed and all the parcels that are listed on that tax bill. And, you know, personally, I would, I would just say, if you wanted to do it, I see three pieces. Let's abate the tax bill. If you want to deal with the acreage tonight, that's great. I know there's probably administrative things like revising our A nine forms and other things like that that have to get done. All right, and then the third piece is renegotiating or discussing a pilot payment.
Yeah.
Okay? So if we could parse that out and do all three, see all three things one at a time, okay? That, that would be great.
It just seems if we're going to be as formal as to abate taxes, I'd like the more formal of us to figure out what the pilot agreement is. So we're all on the same page and do that at the same time. That's, that's what makes sense to me, but I don't know about Kent and Scott. But, you know, that's, it's a, it's a formal agreement for us to abate taxes and there's good reason for that. But, you know, the, the, our good faith agreement in lieu of taxes is also a formal agreement. So personally, I'd like to see them done at the same time. But that's me.
Ken, what do you think?
Yeah, I think that's the right tactic. I, I know you guys are looking out for your interests, that's, we all do that. But I look at this as a town thing that we pay for taking care of you guys up there. We sent police up there, we sent fire trucks up there.
Too much, sorry about that, we're running out of lines.
Well.
Sorry.
No, I'm not suggesting that at all. It's just, I think $2,000 isn't a reasonable amount, personally. But that's just, that's just my opinion.
That's right, but we already paid that for this capture.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so we're talking about.
That would be part of the discussion, true. This is what you've done, this is what we're gonna do going forward. We're all on the same page, okay, let's, let's do it now that we're all agreed and it's, it's codified perhaps in front of us, which would be fine. And if, I don't know what, if it helps or doesn't help to do the, um, the acreage issue tonight or do we do that all at the same time?
Well, that would be my next question. What's the, uh, the consensus, if not agreement, on the acreage as far as it's exemption or not?
I guess it is, it sounds like that.
Yeah, to me that, I would agree.
It, it does to me, I mean, the, the land, you know, Shaker Village, the land used by the Shakers was as important as their village used. Though to me, it's, it's equally a part of the museum. And if, and if that's what it, if that's what it takes to meet the, the use as a museum, I, I would say, yeah. I'd say it, it passes that slight negligible.
The test.
The test, the test, to me.
So I think that, I, I mean, again, I'm speaking for myself, not necessarily for everybody, but I think that that could work well to do it all at the same time. But we want to see, you know, before we sign a new pilot agreement, we want to have a great deal of confidence that the, that we were at agreement on the abatement of the, of the other things as well. Um, because we really, I, I don't think, I don't think you can do both. I mean, I guess we can voluntarily give you money whenever we want, but I think technically.
The technological.
Technically, you don't usually get to tax somebody and take their pilot, you know? So we wanna sort of make sure that we're not being taxed before we agree to a, a new pilot, I think.
Sort of.
And we want to be sure that you agree on the pilot and that that money would be worth coming in there. So we both are wanting to.
So just, just to recap where we're at, rewind the tapes, okay? We're all in agreement that the, the tax bill, the $7,009 plus tax interest and penalties will be abated, based on the input from the town council.
Yes.
Okay?
Certainly speaking for me.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, we're in agreement that the acreage listed on the sheet that Mandy has put together will be considered exempt. And I know that we have some administrative issues to clear up, like the A nine form and things like that.
And, and that I believe should be part of the agreement.
Yes, all right. And we're in agreement that we'll sit down with whomever you choose to negotiate a revised pilot agreement.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, does that state, does that recap by Mr. Katz make us, um, motioned and solidified? Or do we still wait to do that till we have everything in front of us? But that, that moment is our goal.
Well, you would, you would need a motion to abate taxes, penalties and interest.
I think that's where we're heading, but I still don't want to make that motion until we have the, um, pilot agreed upon. And, you know, what, what the village is going to do and what we're gonna do back for the village. Do those at the same time.
And since it's a voluntary payment, should we propose, who makes the proposal? Do you sort of?
Usually the property owner makes the proposal.
Okay.
We, we have pilots with other, um, organizations at town and they have, um, they have made proposals and, and a couple of cases have increased the pilot on their own. We know they're prompting from the town. They just felt that, that, as we talked about tonight, the cost of services is up over the last ten, twenty years and they feel that they, you know, the town treats them well, so they'd like to give us a little more money. And that's, again, it's, it's a mutual agreement that's, uh, based on fairness, that, that they, it's obviously not the full tax value of the properties, but in, in the, if you look at the services that are used, then they try to, to make some kind of donation to the town based on those services.
Which we have no issue with.
Yeah.
So it sounds like maybe balls back in my court to come back with a draft agreement.
Pilot agree.
Pilot agreement. And then at that moment, that means maybe you're comfortable making, oh, and, um, a motion to abate the taxes and then we close, close on that.
I would say we get that, get that, whatever your proposal is, before the meeting, of course.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, of course, yeah.
And we'll have.
I'm sure you, you will have that this week.
Never hurts to just double check.
I think it would be good for you guys to formally, uh, recognize that the property is, uh, exempt.
Okay.
It seems like that was the, that was the only item on that list that was, uh, considered um, by our attorneys that should not be exempt.
Yeah.
So if you guys have exempted, then you should probably do it formally.
Okay, so motion for that, motion for tax abatement.
And what we need a motion. You could do the motion for the land tonight.
Okay.
And then we could do the pilot and the abatement at a future meeting.
Yes, please. If, if that's okay, Mike, that's just my feeling of how it should go.
Yeah.
So you want to do everything at the same.
Land tonight.
Land tonight, okay.
Since we're, that's, that's, I shouldn't say no brain, I don't mean that, but.
All right, so we need your motion referencing the parcels?
The parcels.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion that we, what are we doing? Put it into current use?
Zapping.
No.
Nope, you're zapping.
Zending, okay.
Zapping the parcels.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion that we exempt the following parcels. Two-two-eight dash zero-zero-one, two-two-eight dash zero-zero-eight, two-two-eight dash zero-one-three, two-four-two dash zero-zero-five and two-four-two dash zero-zero-seven.
Seven.
Cal, you caught up?
Hmm.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we dealt with that, so that'll really just leave us two things to deal with, so.
And can we, do we want to look now ahead at the schedule and see when we can do the, the second part?
We hope in our next move.
Yeah, I.
When the budget committee's in?
Well, we can have Shaker Village come in first thing. We can have the first thing and get it done, and then we go right to budget.
There you go.
So it's 5:00 PM on November fourth?
Sounds great.
It'll happen.
Yeah.
And then, so before then, we need your pilot proposal.
And Erin, you and Ken will communicate on that.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm out of it now.
Happy man.
You know, look, we, we, we had a tough road to hoe these last ten months without an executive director that would be amazed at all the details that I had to learn about. For myself, and I can appreciate what Erin is now going through.
Yeah.
And, um, but she is, she's been grabbed onto this thing actively and it's a very happy time for her.
Kudos.
Yeah, thank you both.
All right, we'll see you again then.
Yes, and we'll talk before that, finally. Sorry.
Do you think our table?
I just threw on it.
I need to have it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you guys.
All righty, thanks.
Cal, I'm gonna give you back the Shaker Village tax folder intact.
I hope I don't need to get this back because I wrote all over it. Hey, okay.
This way.
All right.
So. All right, so, yeah, so you can go to. You wanna do some signing?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so the first item I have is the accounts payable manifest in the amount of $24,892.68.
And second.
All those in favor, aye? Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, why is it that you sent a picture to Al? Because Al requested a picture with your signatures. So that he. So he knows when he goes to make the deposit? Uh, I'm not super clear on the process, okay?
So he can sign the checks.
Okay, so he knows he has the authority to actually sign?
Yes.
Okay, go Al.
All right, next is payroll manifest in the amount of $53,193.56.
And second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
I didn't get more lines, bigger lines. Can we get bigger space and lines? I know I keep asking this, is what the program puts?
Do you remember what the answer was?
Yeah. I do. I just keep hoping.
Probably no, wasn't it?
The answer was that when the stamp firm, that in the next year that I buy it.
Always a stamp that you.
So we're gonna use that up till it's done.
That's fine.
It'll be a while.
I'll just ask every time.
Yep. All right, a welfare manifest check in the amount of one thousand, five hundred forty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Do we need a name? Is that okay to read?
Is the, the name?
There isn't a name.
Oh, that's, that's the vendor that it's going to? Because it's a mortgage company? That, that's the name of the mortgage company? That's not a, that's not.
Mister Cooper, okay. So it's a, a check to Mister Cooper, which is a mortgage company.
Really? Okay. Are we sure? Yes. Okay, thank you.
All right, so once again, looking for a motion.
Uh, and seconded.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so I'll just pass that over as well. All right, so a, uh.
So you didn't pass on the.
Okay, so that we just signed.
Yes.
Okay. And today is the twenty-first, right?
We bring an agenda review, and the one we have is slightly different. The one I have, that I printed out, has got all my questions on it. I'm always confused.
All right, any good signs of your cheap losses?
No, not yet.
Pass that over. All right, so next is a letter stating that the town hasn't maintained Borough Road past tax map two one five lot twelve, which is two fifty-one Borough Road for over twenty years. The state RSA provides that a road falls within class six classification if it has not been maintained and repaired in suitable condition for travel for five successive years or more. The town established a road committee in twenty eighteen. The minutes of the Board of Selectment meeting on November ninth, twenty nineteen, reflect that a committee recommended that any roads that have been discontinued prior to nineteen forty-five be considered class six roads until, unless proven otherwise. That is the position the Board of Selectment took then and continues to hold. Ken, do we need a motion or?
No, that is a letter that is going to USDA. One of the property owners is, has applied to the USDA for a conservation easement. And they need proof that that is still a town road. So it is still a town road because it was, it was, it was discontinued, a portion of it was discontinued. But because of the road committee and the Board of Selectment's decision in two thousand nineteen, then that road is still considered a town road, although it's a class six road.
But they just need to know town.
USDA requires that it be a town road, not maintained, but still a town road.
So where does this end right now? Where does that class five road end?
At number twenty, the end of the pavement.
The top of it.
The top of it.
I thought it was, okay.
So they don't, they don't plow past the end of the pavement where the, someone calls the care, care pavement.
Oh, there's on top.
Yeah, at the top.
Is that two fifty-one then?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need a motion or would you sign?
No, that's just the letter to sign that, that says it's a town road.
And then this goes to the landowner?
Goes to the landowner USDA.
So is the, what is the town obligated to do on a class six road? So we own it, but we don't maintain it. And anyone that wants to travel it is free to use us.
Not, it's not private, it's.
Right. Right, it's a class six. All right. All right, appointments slip for Jessica Lozier as deputy town clerk tax selector.
Yes, she has been just an employee, she, no, she has been an employee.
That's right.
She was, she was not a deputy.
I understand, okay, that's why.
You can have, you can have an assistant.
So she was hired as, in that position, but she wasn't appointed as.
She was hired as an assistant, but she was not appointed as a deputy.
Okay.
We're asking, Sam was asking, appointed as a deputy.
And what does that change about her?
Changes her ability to deal with DMV and other.
Oh, all right.
She gonna be taking classes and stuff like?
She hasn't taken some classes.
And this is not an elected position?
Correct, it's an appointed position.
Hi, so she was hired and now is being appointed.
She was hired as an assistant, now she's being appointed as deputy. And holds more authority and has the ability to, you, you can't be, you have to have certain training with DMV before you can be a deputy.
So I'm assuming since Sam brought this to our attention that he's been pleased with some work in the office and she's doing the other things she needs to do and, okay. Good. It's gonna be a long day.
Yes, it is. All right, there's that. So the next one is a appointment slip for Ray Huppin as ballot clerk. And, um, once again, is that just a?
So we, we have appointed ballot clerks for elections.
Yeah.
And, um, these are just the appointment slips.
Okay.
They're voluntary positions that, that people that work the elections, they, they have to be appointed.
Understood, okay.
Do all the, everyone who's there, doing everything, you have to sign appointments, everybody?
There's a lot of appointments.
Do you need to read out each one, or can you just sign them all?
Pardon me?
I was asking Scott, does he need to read out each one individually, or can we just?
No, you do not have to.
Go through the stack?
I'm just gonna start signing.
Unless one goes across in front of your desk that you don't want to sign, then.
Did we find the Republicans we needed? And if I was?
Yes, as the email from Jim Miller said we needed. Even number of Democrats and Republicans and.
Registered Republicans, which is one of the, which is the difference, because we have many neighbors who vote Republican but are actually registered as either, but, or under client, which I don't know Sri Johnston.
Is she from the, the orchard?
Who?
Sri Johnston.
So Sri, I know. And we don't have to sign our own, right? We have to be there. Are we still considered?
Well, you're so blackwood.
But if I'm acting as a ballot clerk, like I'll be here?
Doesn't.
Doesn't matter?
That can be part of you, it would just.
Yes. Yes.
All right. All right, that takes care of those. Yeah.
Done.
Yeah, actually, there's the appointment folder. Thank you for keeping us on this count, as always. All right, I think that brings us to the previous minutes approval from October seventh, twenty twenty-four. There were some corrections by Cal. I'll draw your attention to line seventy, eighty-one, one forty-seven, and one forty-eight. And Cal, I think that's it, right?
Yes, so on line seventy, Ken pointed out that Shaker Village didn't formally appeal. So I was using the word appeal locally, but for clarification, I'm gonna change it to disputed.
Yeah.
Um, on line eighty, Beth pointed out that it wasn't that they were looking for a Republican, they were looking for a registered Republican, so it was not certain the word registered.
Yeah.
And then on line one forty-seven, Beth pointed out that that line item V, um, or five, is part of a twenty twenty-five budget discussion, so she suggested just bumping that out. It's not under the hiring, the highway hiring update section, it should be. Yeah, just bumping it out to a new, a new section, and now result in renumbering everything that is up there.
Understood, which makes perfect sense.
So if you are fine with all those, then that's all done.
All right, I'll make a motion, then we accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Cal, it's, it's really helpful to highlight them like that.
Yeah, I agree. All right, new business. There are no items, somebody else.
No, I don't think so. But we've got, oh, I always get confused as to what's new and what's old. Look, what's old business.
Old business.
Yeah, old business.
All right, so building rental policy drafting, we each, we have two drafts.
So if you, if you look at the first page, um, the differences are, one has insurance in the second paragraph, and the other has fees. Um, the one that has insurance on it also has fees, it's just there was a paragraph on insurance there. Our property liability carrier suggests that we maintain requirement for organizations that are renting town buildings to carry insurance. We have.
Originally, it was like a million dollars, though, something like that.
Correct, it is, it's a million dollars per occurrence. Commercial, one-day commercial insurance is available from several carriers, uh, and it's like fifty dollars to buy a, buy a one-day policy. So it's not a lot of money.
Yeah.
And they feel that it's in the town's best interest to do that. Um, we included the one without insurance, in case you guys wanted to, to do that one. I think the indemnification clause at the beginning. I, I'm not an attorney or an insurance employee. But I look at that indemnification clause as protection to the town. But again, it's up to you guys, and our, our insurance company recommends that we maintain the policy, but it's something.
All right, so in the, that's the same in both?
Everything else is exactly the same, other than the insurance part.
I think it certainly proved to take the advice of our insurers and keep indemnification there as well as insurance.
I, I don't have any problem with this. Is it gonna be available up when they get the key, or how?
Yeah, so what we would do is we would have a list of insurance companies that they could call uh, that have, that have that one-day policies available.
I think that'd be really helpful, because otherwise people would be like, whoa. Yeah.
We typically, typically rent out the town hall, the baby showers, and things like that. Our insurance company did point out that, um, sometimes there's an insurance claim on a baby shower, um, you're, you stand as much, much chance as an insurance claim or baby shower as you do from any other event. So they said.
And that's mostly granting the town hall for that, right?
That, well, that's any town building.
Any town, so. Parish house included, even though.
No, that's not a town building. Parish house is a lot of town buildings. That's the municipal building, uh, this building here, the town hall, the gazebo, and the gazebo, the Pelkins and housing museum.
Well, I have to say, there's an awful lot of incidents of people falling without much reason to fall, uh, and I think that is, seems proved, especially if you have grandlives.
We put it in place several years ago for a reason, and it's just we had a couple of different forms, and so we're trying to make this one form, and that's, that's what this is.
If, if we allow someone to use the building without charging them, I know that happens, is that still gonna require insurance, or?
It, it really should, but again, that's up to you guys to decide if we have an organization that wants to, to use it and, and they're not, we're not charging them. And if you guys feel that we don't need to have them carry the insurance, then that's up to you guys.
So how does this affect things like, um, I, that's funny, I never really considered the gazebo a town building. Of course it is, but so when community members want to have a Memorial Day thing, using the gazebo, and there's bands in there, and there's people in there, blah, blah, blah.
So that would be a community function, so we'd recover.
Okay.
If, if it's a private function.
Like a wedding that takes place in the gazebo.
Wedding, a baby shower.
Yeah, okay.
They do clothing swaps at the town hall, um.
But that's a community.
That depends on the organization that is, from, the ones that have been done previous have been um, not purely the organizations.
Okay.
They've been one particular person organized.
For a private thing, okay.
What about care of the fair?
The care of the fair would be required, I believe they do carry anything.
Yeah, okay.
We're, I, certainly, we're applying.
Yep.
I would say the insurance is.
We discussed that many years ago, and that was, that was, that they did carry.
Yeah, yeah.
I think insurance is good, and I also, I kinda like the neighborliness of having a list of places for people to call and say for.
For insurance.
For short-term insurance, it's only fifty bucks. It sounds, because, you know, you look at a million dollars per, you know, you think it's gonna, it's just a baby shower, but if we have that list available to them, I think that's great. I would keep that in there.
Yeah.
Is everything, also scheduling fees are the same?
Everything else has been updated.
Okay, scheduling?
Yeah.
Oh, what did we go? The alcohol was the other issue.
The alcohol was the other one. Sometimes allow it, some don't. We have always allowed it.
How often does that happen?
Not very often.
Yeah.
Not very often at all.
I'm trying to think of one.
And, and again, it's, it's, there's a requirement, sometimes having a requirement for a police officer, if alcohol is being served. Ours is a requirement that the, if someone's serving it, that they be trained. If they're, and most, if there's, if there's a vendor that's coming in to serve alcohol, their vendors are approved, they have to get permission from the liquor commission to do that, so they have their approval.
So a baby shower with Edna's sparkling prosecco punch, can they serve it, or no?
Well, they shouldn't. But then I sparkling her, her punch.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know what I mean, it, it seems a little, if we're going to be talking about insurance for baby showers, baby showers have punch, and it's pretty, so do we, do they need a police officer for that, or do they say, no, we're not gonna have alcohol, and we don't need a police officer?
That's.
Do they, do they in there, though?
We, I, my suggestion would be to leave it in there, and we have a lot of case-by-case cases if.
Okay.
If, yeah.
I just got a question, what is a curtilage? Coolage or?
Oh, I looked this up, because I wasn't sure if it was a real word, and it's, oh, cur, curtilage.
Yeah.
Oh, it's the.
Sheds, barns.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll let them in the bathroom.
Right, right, it's a very old term. It is, indoors.
Interesting, that's a word I have never run into. All right, so no endos smoking damage, that's no modifications. Clean access for the, okay. Do we want to? Okay, so do we want to list here the buildings that this covers, and then they, when they sign, they can check off which building it refers to, because it doesn't?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then I should say. Oh, no, the Parson's building.
That's top on the, on the top right.
Oh, it's on top, yeah, okay. And if you wanted to make it easy on the, just to, since this applies to all buildings, just to have them check which one? But that's later.
Seems kind of very funny.
So what did you decide for, you said yes to insurance, but did you say yes in all cases, or did you say exceptions for public events, or, I missed what the decision was.
So I think that, Ken, what we, past practice has been insurance for everything except for.
Community, community event.
So the.
Community sponsored event, I guess.
The swap shop the other day was closed, and the town hall would be covered for that type of thing.
If, if it was a community sponsored event.
Yeah. But.
Yeah, if it was the.
Jane Hastings Art classes.
Would not be.
Would not be, okay.
If, if it was sponsored by the Historical Society, or some other town organization, then, then it would be exempt.
So what about a, well, that's, that's another question, so what about the Canterbury Tales presentation in the town hall the other night? It's, it's a, it's a separate entity, it's got its own tax identity, it's not Canterbury's town, even though if the proceeds go to support the, the thirty cemeteries in town.
Yeah, Canterbury Fair goes to support town things, right?
So, but, but that should have.
They should, they should have insurance.
Okay, I'll make sure that that's brought up next, next year, okay.
Is that fifty dollars per building, or fifty dollars for the whole day, for everything they?
Usually, usually it's fifty dollars for the event.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mary.
I'm ready for a vote.
You're ready? So what are we gonna call this one, then?
This is the facilities use agreement with insurance.
Okay.
I, I, you can just say, you're gonna vote on the updated, you have a revised facility use.
Okay.
All right, that's, yeah, that's enough.
So I'll make a motion, then we vote on the revised facilities use agreement. Just note that it includes insurance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Cal, would you like, like, version two back to recycle, do you use the back of these pages again, what would you like?
I'll use a scrap paper, yeah, I don't think.
I mean, this will end up being posted somewhere, or it can be emailed to us, perhaps?
Um, I've got, I need to formalize it to it, so that we can.
I know, both of them.
I think so, because then you can just use it here.
Makes sense.
We'll use the paper.
Yeah. All right. All right, so.
Do we have a ballot clerk's update, since we just signed everybody's appointments, so that is my mistake.
Okay, yeah. All right, so that brings us to Pinnacle Rescue Squad update.
Yes, we're meeting next Monday morning at ten AM in Concord with the Merrimack County Commissioners, representatives from the town of Boswood. I have put together this packet that you have. You asked me to draft a position for town Canterbury, so the position, the, the top portion of this first page is, if, if Merrimack County was included in the cost, and there's one based on population, which is the current model, the Pinnacle Rescue, and then the bottom is cost based on calls. And these are actual call volume numbers from two thousand twenty-three.
Or did you get those extra numbers today?
I got, I got the numbers at four thirty this afternoon.
Okay, yeah, I see.
So these are all actual numbers.
Yeah.
Your position is at the bottom. I think, Scott, you had talked about this last time.
Absolutely, yeah.
About that it would be more fair to use it based on call volume than on population, so I, I put that, and again, it's your draft. You have field of changes. The next page is just a, a copy of that, that thing that's on the front page. It was just a spreadsheet, that was an Excel spreadsheet I put together. That says with Merrimack County. The next page is two thousand twenty-three actual. And those are the twenty-three actual numbers, and based on population, and then based on call volume, that's without Merrimack County. And the next page is from two thousand nineteen, when we did this, we started talking about this. The top section is Tri-Town.
Yeah.
Which at the time was serving both Allentown and Pembroke, and that has since changed. They no longer supply services to Pembroke, so.
Yeah, okay, I mean, it's Allentown.
Yeah, it's Allentown. Allentown is a, is a fire-based name of Allentown.
Yeah.
So these were the, those were the prices in two thousand nineteen, then you have twenty-three, and then you have twenty-three with Merrimack County, and then you have the twenty-three with Merrimack County in your position.
And certainly, I continue to believe that for the town of Canterbury, this is the best solution, Pinnacle Rescue. If we were to look at going with our own ambulance, we would probably.
Oh, could you even guess, could you even, can you even make a guess what it would be?
No.
Honestly, I, you know. You, you would have to fund. At, at the very least, you would have to hire two full-time EMTs.
Plus a truck.
Buy a, purchase a vehicle, it'd be capital expenses and operating expenses. Capital expenses would be the vehicle, all the equipment that goes with it, I think Chief Cartel said, what did they say at the last meeting, that you wanted one of those?
Correct, somewhere between two- and three-year delivery.
Right.
And it was, I don't remember the cost.
I wanna say it was like two hundred and fifty, or three hundred thousand, or something.
Yeah, somewhere there.
So that would be a capital all day, and then you'd have to figure out the operating costs, which would be salary or benefits, and they currently run advanced life support, so it wouldn't be EMTs, it would be EMTs, paramedics, which demand a higher rate of pay.
If we could find them.
If you could find them, and you would have to hire, probably, if, if you only hired two, that would give you probably five days' week coverage.
But not twenty-four seven.
But not twenty-four seven, like we're getting now. So, operating costs, I would say you would probably have to triple what we're paying now, and then you'd have capital all days, and then the cost of maintenance repair.
Now, this is still, all these numbers are still assuming that it's Pinnacle Rescue running the vehicles and the staff they have now. This does not include if they decide, or how is it decided, or when is it decided, if they need a second ambulance and other?
That's correct, I did not include a second ambulance in this. The numbers that I received from the Capitol area mutual aid compact on missed calls.
Yeah, yeah.
I hate to say, I hate to use that, missed calls, it's calls that are handled by other organizations.
Because the, the first one is busy, right?
Yeah, I think I had that last meeting.
Right.
We had Webster Rescue, which they're running at nine percent of, of other call, or calls they could not call, take, and Bo Ambulance is four percent, and Pinnacle Rescue is eight point seven. So Pinnacle Rescue is higher than, than Bo, but less than Webster Rescue. I didn't get any other information from the compact that gave me those towns, because they were, Webster's similar to, to Canterbury, Bo's bigger, so it was just they, they.
Do you know at what point Pinnacle gets really pushed to say that they need a second ambulance? Which is still a better price for us.
So the, the, I think the discussion at the last meeting about the second ambulance was because of the increased call volume, and they were, there was some concern where at some point, there will be a, a threshold that they feel that, that they're, they're not, they're missing too many calls. They're not providing the services that are, that are, that are, that are the towns are paying for.
But they haven't said what that threshold is yet.
They have not, they have not.
Okay, so we don't know if we're close to it, or far away from it.
And I think this was prompted, Boswood asked the question, and so they came with some figures for a, a second ambulance, just for Boswood, because they have the majority of the calls, and what would it cost for an eight-hour second ambulance? So they would staff two ambulances every day, and then one ambulance at night.
And the Pinnacle Rescue really was seeking the help of the towns.
Quite right.
On what we thought about a second ambulance. And, you know, certainly, this year, and probably for the next several years going forward, cost is really gonna be a factor.
Well, cost as well, but again, if, if they're not being able, whatever that threshold is, if that could be determined, if they're still meeting, you know, between Pinnacle Rescue and whoever else is in the compact, our needs are still being met, right?
But I think we determine the threshold, that's, that's what I said. We decide if the service that we're being provided is not adequate.
Okay.
It could be influenced by the other services that are providing backup coverage to the towns.
Yeah.
If the other services feel they're being overwhelmed by too many calls to a neighboring town, then they typically contact that town and say, well, we're coming here too often, and you guys are gonna do something to get a full-time ambulance or something like that. That's usually the way it works, is the, the town's providing, the backup ambulance are the ones that, that make the push staff, either a full-time ambulance, or somebody else, or something.
But those other towns, nobody's yelled ouch yet.
No one has, no one has approached the town.
Right, actually, really good to know if there was a estimate of what that threshold was, so we, so we know how to think about it, but.
I'm not sure even Sean has.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't dare guess, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think really, it's, you know, are the, are the neighboring agencies complaining, and/or are the residents of the towns they serve complaining?
Yeah.
That's really what comes down.
I think only Salisbury might be complaining.
Yeah.
Or would be if they had to get their services from what, in London?
They had the destination.
Yeah, that's, that's not, not gonna make their residents happy, really.
So, on, at the meeting on Monday, I am going to offer to take the lead on this discussion with the commissioners, at least from the town of Canterbury's position. I'll talk to Boswood and Salisbury and see what they wanna do. This includes the three of them, I'm gonna send this information to them, and I'll I, I'd like to do this in a non-confrontational way with the county commissioners.
Yeah.
To provide them with information that, basically says that the call volume, Boswood has the most, and, and that, and if you split Boswood in the county out, county comes in second with twenty-nine percent. Canterbury is, is third with seventeen percent, Salisbury is down to eight percent, so it seems only fair that if, if Merrimack County is, is fighting themselves with twenty-nine, almost thirty percent, almost a third of the calls, then there should be some kind of participation or something that, that Canterbury, it's Boswood, and Salisbury are providing now.
And what if they just say no? Which, they could, right?
They could.
So then we're right, then we're backward, we are now, right?
I think, I think then it becomes a, a.
A different conversation.
It becomes a different conversation for the boards of selectmen to have, and what the options are.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think that, given Ken's background, he really is the perfect person to present this, as he said, in a non-confrontational manner.
I can't imagine confrontation will help the discussion, so. Let's see, but, see, because they may, they may not care one way or the other, I guess we'll find out. Do we know yet where that meeting is?
I do, I have to get the address for that, I will wait. I don't know, I don't know, I, I.
They don't want us to show up.
I didn't know they had their meetings in Concord, I thought their meetings were all at the.
That's what I thought, yeah, but they've absolutely, yeah, publicly noticed.
Yeah, so. So I'll, I'll look out for you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, well, okay, that'll be fun.
Anything further on Pinnacle Rescue for anyone?
No.
All right, moving on. Comcast franchise agreement update.
Yay.
Which I believe I have. Just the one copy, Ken?
Just the one copy, prior signatures. So that is the updated franchise agreement, and if you want to read the line in the I think it's the second and the third.
So one thing that I, I did think of is, can Comcast provide us with a list of the houses, so that, that we'll know when somebody calls, okay, you're on that grant list, that, I think would be very helpful for anyone who answers the phone in Sam Lake.
Yeah, yeah.
A list of what, Scott?
So, but, well.
Oh, for the, the extra long driveways that Merrimack County has, by the extra.
So they were, they had a list of approximately twenty residences that were not part of the original
Right.
construction period, that they were waiting for the BMGI money and the B money.
B money, that was the term.
So, so I know the house on, this house on Asbury Road that, that met those, but I can get a list from, from them.
I think that would be helpful.
That they have.
If, when you get that list.
Yeah.
If you could pass it on to the select board.
Yeah.
I think that would be helpful for all. I think that would be helpful for all of us because I've had a couple of checks and phone calls and it would be helpful to know.
Yep. So you guys had asked for some clarification on on in the franchise agreement, basically saying that the majority of the of the houses or residences in Canterbury were going to be covered.
As a kind of replacement for the density clause that they added there.
Correct. So what they what they did was they included in this introduction, it says, this is new language, whereas the town and Comcast have worked closely to ensure every resident has access to the cable system, it is understood that not all houses are currently connected. And whereas the town and Comcast will continue to work closely to connect the remaining homes to the cable system during the upcoming round of broadband equity access and deployment, be grants offered by the federal and state government. So that is the their their attempt at trying to make sure that all of the houses, all the residents, the addresses in Canterbury are served in the near future, so.
And that and that's replacing that whole density clause, correct?
No, the density clause is still in there and that is in there because in the future, if there's a if the town decides to put in a road somewhere that that doesn't isn't served right now, if it doesn't meet the density clause, then they're not they're not held to 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 run cable there.
Oh, so this this franchise agreement just is a snapshot of the town as it exists now. And anything else is up for grabs.
Yeah, yeah.
So what about any future developments, say, down.
Except eighteen?
Yeah, except eighteen. Any cluster house or anything?
Typically, at at this point, their infrastructure goes by or goes to every resident in Canterbury.
Okay.
Or will.
Yeah, yeah.
Very shortly. Unless we put in a new road.
Oh, it'll go.
Extend.
Got it.
If we extended, if all of a sudden the town decided, we're going to turn Welsh Road from a class six to a class five road and we're gonna it's gonna the property owners are going to subdivide it and put in ten houses or whatever, then that's not covered. If there's a development that goes in, that goes where the infrastructure goes by, then we could the town before the planning board approves that development, would require the developer to say, okay, well, broadband access goes by where the development is going to go in and it's up to you guys to to run the broadband to your new houses.
And make the and make the that part of the development.
Yeah, most most developers, they that's part of the infrastructure.
Okay.
In cities and towns with water and sewer, that that is part of the infrastructure upgrade. This goes along with power and and water and sewer.
Now, since they're going to be coming to talk to us, that's good to that's a good bit of information to know.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You want to take a anybody look at this?
I saw it. I saw it.
Okay, Kent?
Nope. So you need a motion to accept and sign the franchise agreement.
All right. So make a motion that we accept and sign the franchise agreement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Brian Christensen.
No, he's sorry. I'm sorry. It's like the it's not the back. It's you have to go.
Oh, I should. Where's our little sticky dog?
We'll find it. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Jesus. Crackers.
There it is. All right. So I'll do it this way.
Ready?
And then I'll put it back together and then do the back. Understood, yeah. All right, so this goes like this. Ken? It gets to you.
Thank you.
That took a while, didn't it?
Yeah.
She wouldn't be working on this.
Eight years.
H. All right, well, eight years well spent.
Seven years.
I have a few other things on the whole business that aren't on the agenda. One is the letter to one county alone, based on your decision at the last meeting. And it just says, this letter is a whole notification. The town of Canterbury Board of Selectment met on October seventh, two thousand twenty four and conducted a public hearing and determined that the above property is in violation of Canterbury zoning regulation, article two point one of Boxer's uses. The Board of Selectment also determined after testimony from your representatives that at this time no penalties will be assessed. However, they reserve the right to assess penalties if the property is not brought into compliance within six months of this hearing.
Yep.
I'm going to sign this.
Yeah.
I just need your approval that that's okay. Motion? Nope, you don't need a motion. Just unless you have any other editorials, okay?
Yeah. Have you heard anything from the family?
No, the well.
Except that the rig of whatever.
The rig of possession was done.
Right.
I went by it today and there's vehicles there. I couldn't tell if they're taking stuff out or bringing it in. Hold on.
Yeah.
But I haven't heard anything from the family to say they are moving things out there.
And I assume when Joel works, he'll keep an eye on it.
He will, yes.
And obviously, those of us that go by it.
Yep. Yeah, all right. The next thing is our attorneys and the town have not heard back from the prior employee that stole his money for a training class we sent him to. It costs a couple hundred dollars, two hundred and fifty or two hundred and seventy five dollars, file electronically small claims.
Yeah.
I would say that that's what we should do. And and I will do it. We'll have to involve our attorneys. I can just file electronically and then we'll see what happens. If if the other party files electronic also, that is decided and we are notified of the decision. If the other party wishes or we wish to go to a trial, then then we'll be notified of that.
Right.
Yeah, I think we're all agreed.
Okay. Okay. The last thing is I'd like to go into executive session to discuss a personnel issue. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we go into executive session.